Yeah, the sweet chili sauce is, we've been, you know, working on that and that really turned it back good. We're about ready to start putting labels on those jars and, right?
How's it going?
Well, that's cool, the chat, yeah, we were kinda too busy for the floor to do any chatting, so, you know. But that young man again.
Hey, you're blocking my deal.
Making a homemade sausage.
Hey, did you get me, get my call out one weekend? Okay, I didn't want someone to put a statement. Thanks, Jeff.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Committee of the Whole Meeting of the DeKalb City Council, August 10, 2020. I'd like to welcome those of you who may be joining us on Channel 14 on Comcast, and now Channel 3 on MetroNet. And in talking to the folks at MetroNet recently, they're going to oblige us by putting the public access channel on which you're watching tonight also on Channel 14. So whether you will be watching on MetroNet or on Comcast, you'll be able to, to watch on Channel 14. Thank you. For the benefit of those who may not have heard me because the mayor did not turn his mic on, this is the August 10, 2020 meeting of the DeKalb City Council Committee of the Whole. Welcome those to you on, watching on Comcast, watching on MetroNet, or those of you who are joining us on Zoom. Our city clerk Lynn Fizikas is joining us remotely tonight, and Lynn, can you hear me? City Clerk Lynn Fizikas, unmute yourself, can you hear me?
I am unmuted and I can hear you.
Very good, thank you. With that, I will call this meeting to order and ask City Clerk Fizikas to call the roll, please.
Morris.
Here.
Finuchin.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Perkins.
Here.
McAdam.
Here.
Verbic.
Here.
Favor.
Here.
Mayor Smith.
Here.
Eight present.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is approval of the agenda. We only have one item on the agenda this evening for this committee of the whole, and that's consideration of proposals. We have three of them to redevelop the former city hall property at 200 South 4th Street. Are there any additions or deletions to tonight's agenda? If not, then entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Favor. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Morris.
Yes.
Finuchin.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdam.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Eight aye.
Thank you. We've had no one sign up for public participation this evening. Those speaking will be those representatives from our developers tonight, so we can move right into that. And we are going to go in the order on which the agenda is produced, presented. Is this Bessie who wants to speak in public participation during this meeting? Okay, Bessie, if you would kindly go to the podium. Make sure the microphone is on. We've asked anybody who's using the mic tonight to please disinfect the microphone between, or after your finish, so that the next person on the agenda can be speaking into a clean microphone. So the one person who would like to speak tonight during public participation is our former mayor, Bessie Cronopoulos.
I hope I got the right paper here. I moved as fast as I could. This is not the easiest building to get into.
And for anyone tonight, under public participation, there's only Bessie, try to refrain, try to keep your comments to three minutes or less.
Thank you. Lot going on here today, I guess. Our city, our city hall should not have been moved without extensive public input. The square block was bought over years with the intent of using it as a municipal building, parking, plenty of room to add on, et cetera. Now, it seems that city offices require less space. Well, I can see that, so bring in other governmental entities. They could use what was once city council chambers for their meetings, and they could televise, et cetera. The school district, the county could use small office, a small office for certain functions, maybe the park district. That space could also be used for public access facility to broadcast programs of public interest, a local government center in which people would work. Others would come and do their business. Surrounding buildings could be rehab for offices or residential, single duplex families, more people, more foot traffic, and plenty of parking for workers and visitors to be able to walk to that grueling block away where downtown is. Foot traffic, that was one of the reasons that you wanted to move our city hall. Anyway, that's kind of the general concept of, in my brain and what I've talked with about other people, something you might want to chew over. Now, as far as this TIF stuff, what in the world is this council doing delaying any TIF outlay before a full-blown investigation of the misdirected funds? I think you're putting the cart before the horse here, folks. Somehow, some of the entities that were impacted by this misdirection seem to be reluctant to push because there's a thought of some kind of lawsuits being involved. No lawsuits need to happen. Sit down and negotiate and talk with the other entities and see how our monies can be better utilized. I'm kind of collapsing what I've, because I've sent this to all of you anyway. Maybe this sharing of a building is one possibility. Why be scared off by the threat of lawsuits? That's ridiculous. We need to sit down and talk with each other. The spoon-feeding of information to the FAC and the council from the staff must end. Let those citizen volunteers dig deep into the budget on their own while council utilizes its cow meetings to discuss points amongst itself. Now more than ever, council needs to meet continually to look at the details of the budget. And they can start by, let the FAC do their job, call the auditor sickage to find out why in the world they didn't discover any wrongdoings. Sit down with the other entities and have some frank discussions of how to utilize these misspent funds. And, this is a biggie because it ties into housing, and for some reason, somebody thinks that we need more multiple housing. Have a forthright conversation about how's the housing stock in this community, coming to terms about what to do with aging homes and multiple housing and why there's such a push. It's obvious the TIF has been poorly used. This feeding of the public trough is ridiculous. We need to come together and demand that the TIF audit report be used as a starting point for the city of DeKalb to take a step forward and clean house. And if you want to look at something that was done well, and this is not pro any one developer here or not, I'm not in favor anymore of multiple housing. That's, it's just not necessary. I think Mr. Mason's idea of repurposing that facility has some merit. I'm not really in favor anymore of housing there. But if you want to talk to someone, and I'm not always happy with what Steve is doing. Yeah, come on. You're not perfect either, none of us are. But way back when, when TIF started, the DeKalb Pond Fisk, that's a perfect example of what TIF should be. So, that's it. Start thinking, council, don't just get spoon- fed.
Thank you, Bessie. Now, we move into our one consideration tonight. Consideration of proposals to redevelop the former city hall property at 200 South 4th Street. First speaker will be Steve Irving. Prior to that, I'm going to ask city manager Bill Nicholas to make any introductory remarks.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just going to make a couple remarks and then step back out of the way. As you know, the city council, about a year ago, directed the city manager to look at the possibility of redeveloping the site once we relocated to the downtown location where we are now, 164 East Lincoln Highway. We did that in June. We requested proposals that were out for about 30 days, and the deadline for the proposals was July 20. We received three proposals from three developers who are here in the audience tonight. Every one of them, a local developer, every one of them has been involved in, in this community and redeveloping property, repurposing property for decades. So, we're very fortunate to have those three proposals from these three entities. I would just finally say to the council that there is some integrity to this process that needs to be observed even in the conversation tonight. The opportunity was there to think about this for about 30 days and to come up with written proposals. They are before you. They're also available to the public. Full proposals are online and abbreviated versions are also attached to your packet tonight. And we hope that each, each developer will speak to their proposal, and then you'll have an opportunity to answer, ask questions relating to the proposals that have been presented to you for the last four or five days. Thank you.
Okay, our first presenter is Steve Irving from Irving Construction. I would ask Mr. Irving, Mr. Pappas, and Mr. Mason to try to keep your presentation to about 10 minutes. And that'll give our city council some time for some comments. Steve?
Okay, thank you. Steve Irving, I grew up in DeKalb. My family lives in DeKalb. I've been in business for 45 years. I own my own business and always have, and I've built a multitude of different prob, buildings in DeKalb and DeKalb County. My proposal is to provide the American dream for existing and new residents of DeKalb. An affordable house, single-family, unattached house with unattached garages, all entering off the alley. There'd be absolutely no curb cuts involved in my project on 4th or 5th Street. They'd be one- and two-story homes using the same blueprint that I used on DeKalb Pond Fisk and Cern Lane down by the old high school. 1,200 square feet of living space. One and a half to two bathrooms, three bedrooms. A beautiful porch with some trellis work to match the decor of the older neighborhood. The garages, as I said, would be unattached off the alley. They'd be 25 feet wide and 30 feet long, so there's plenty of storage in the garages. And in between the garage and the, the back of the house would be a pretty nice-sized backyard. All of the units would have four off-street parkings, when, parking spots. When you consider, two cars would easily fit in the garage, and then the garages would be set back from the alley 25 feet. So there'd be, for every housing unit, there'd be four off-street parking spots, which is really a nice feature. You know, I've talked to a few of the neighbors there. A lady, a couple from the suburbs bought the house directly across the street. A pretty yellow house, two-story. It's probably 100 years old. They paid $143,000 for that house about a year ago. They had a tear-down garage, an old one-car garage that they tore down, and they've done some real nice work to it. And they moved here for the lifestyle of DeKalb, the slower pace. I have experience providing nice, affordable housing right here in DeKalb. I've done two projects several years ago that have been very successful. In the late 1990s, I partnered with the city of DeKalb. Bill was the city manager at the time. The city bought all the property from the Hayshire Elwood Tenement Buildings on DeKalb Pond Fisk Avenue. They bought all the buildings, they relocated all the tenants, they demolished all the buildings. They provided new water, sewer, storm, curb cuts. And I don't know the exact figure, Bill, Bessie, you two may, but the city invested a ton of money in that project. Far more than what I paid the, the city for the property. I basically got the property, I think, for like $50,000. And part of the agreement I had with the city was that I would provide affordable housing for owners, not renters. And sold every one of those houses, I think we built 17 houses down there, we sold them within months for $85,000. And what's interesting, they've appreciated substantially, and several of the original buyers still live in those houses. Ta Pam, she's the branch manager of Castle Bank out on, wherever the heck it is. Reverend David Cal, he and his wife still live there, and there's a few others that still live in those houses. And all of them, if you drive down there, they've been maintained very well. Very small lots. We ended up putting a city park in the middle where there used to be an old water pumping station that the city owned. With that project, there were no impact fees. We had negotiated a reduced building permit fee. I don't believe there, look back at some of the old paperwork. We had, had to have it approved as a PUD because the lots were like 4,000 square feet. And that all went well, and as I say, once it was approved, we, we started building. We, we built them as quick as we could, which was very fast, and they sold very well. After that project, in the mid-1990s, I bought 10 acres of land from Elliot Wood, which was located down between 4th and 7th Street, across from the DeKalb Park District Rec Center. And I built 40 houses, bought the land, put the water, sewer, storm, detention in, and sold all 40 houses within 18 months. I sold the houses at an average cost of $100,000. Some were $95,000, others were $105,000. And over the past 30 years, these two projects, DeKalb Pond Fisk and La Cern Lane, there's over 56 houses there. In that 25-year period, those combined, they have contributed over $7 million in property taxes to the city of DeKalb. Same thing with La Cern Lane. There were no impact fees. There were no annexation fees. There was a flat building permit fee that I paid in advance, and the reason for that was we were building them so fast and we're selling them so quickly that I had two floor plans. One was a ranch and the other was the two-story home. And if you drive down there, I mean, the same thing. Abby Delano was one of the original buyers. She still lives there. She's raised her whole family there. They just really liked the neighborhood. The recent sale down La Cern Lane was $150,000. So in the 25-year period, there's been some tremendous steady appreciation. So I have to ask myself and ask the city. The city invested a ton of money to redevelop these properties, to provide affordable, single-family housing. These bring in new families to the community. It keeps local people in the community. They're invested and they contribute to the, the well-being of the city, and they want to be here. I have a couple friends, my daughter, she's 31 years old, and they heard about my proposal for this project. They've been calling, thank goodness they're calling her and not me, but they are really hot to trot to get into a nice little house. I hired two real estate appraisers and talked to several others to estimate the marketability of my proposal. I've also consulted with real estate professionals, and based on the location, recent sales, the square footage that I'm proposing, these homes should sell between $160,000 and $170,000. In the last three months, or last two months, there have been over 30 homes in the area that have sold between $105,000 and $175,000. They're all older, well-old, existing stock homes. I talked to a realtor the other day that listed a house on Sunset Avenue, homes at least 60 years old, for $149,000. She had seven offers within four days. I'd like to really congratulate the city, Bill Nicholas, because I know he was the lead person on bringing this Candy Company to DeKalb and the Facebook development project. They're great for DeKalb. They're going to contribute a lot of property tax to the area and jobs. But, at what cost? From what I've read, and I haven't seen the particulars, I mean, the city and all the taxing bodies gave up quite a bit to get those companies here. If I said 50%, I don't know if that would be close, but I kind of get the impression that that's about what it is. It's huge. I saw the real estate closings for those properties, $54 million combined. But at what price did we pay? The average employee at that Candy Company, at Target, at Nestle, Goodyear, 3M, these are people who want to live here. But can they live here? Their average pay, and I know people that work there, I have a distant relative that works at Target. She makes less than $40,000 a year. What was the last time DeKalb invested in affordable, single-family housing? As far as I know, goes all the way back to La Cern Lane and DeKalb Pond Fisk. That's 25, 27 years ago. One of the more popular places, and I have a person that works for me, bought a mobile home at Southmore Estates. Now, the Lasko family's done one hell of a nice job running that project. Pat Lasko and his son have owned it since its inception. This lady works for me. She has a salary around $50,000, a little bit more. She paid $65,000 for a double-wide with a two-car garage. And do you know what she pays in property taxes? $100 a year. There are several hundred units down there, but they're well-kept. But, you know, I guess you'd have to say, in my opinion, that's our affordable housing in DeKalb. D.H. Horton, national builder, came into DeKalb in a distressed sale. The previous developer couldn't make it on Devon Air Farms. They picked up all the remaining lots down there for next to nothing. All the improvements were provided for him. The water, the sewer, the storm, the impact fees, the curb gutter, and roadway was all there. They're struggling. I, they're selling houses in the low 200s to 260.
Steve, you're over 10 minutes now.
Oh, boy. Okay. No secret, give me one minute to close here. So northern's enrollments declined. Our average income in DeKalb has declined, and the results have been empty apartments. We've had increased crime. The owners of all these different apartment buildings on the north side of DeKalb have sold out, and Hunter Property owns most of them. How many code violations do they have? Couple thousand? Look at the problem, problems north of campus. We have drug problems, shootings. We've even had a couple murders up there. And I, I guess I'd have to ask the city, why? Why did we pay $400,000 to buy an abandoned apartment on Edgbrook Drive? And will pay several hundred thousand dollars to tear it down to create an empty lot? My point is, John Pappas, I have to congratulate he and his son. They've done a great job with their apartments on 1st and 2nd, and now 4th Street. But personally, I, I think we've had enough apartments for the time being. If this trend continues with building more and more apartments, what is that going to do to the existing home, owners of older apartment buildings? If you take a drive up on the north side of DeKalb, and I'm working up there now, there's sororities that are vacant. There's buildings that are just a mess. And I, I don't want to paint a bad picture of DeKalb. It's been a great place to, to grow up, to work, to run my business. But I, what is the vision for DeKalb? Are we going to have hundreds and thousands of apartments? How are we going to attract other companies like the Candy Company to come to DeKalb? And I would assume one of the first things they ask is, well, what's, what's your available housing?
Would you try to wrap it up, Steve?
Okay. I strongly believe our proposal is the best one for DeKalb and now and in the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next presenter tonight is Jim Mason from James C. Mason Development.
Good evening, attendees and Mr. Mayor. There's three petitioners here tonight. How do I modulate, okay? Three petitioners tonight. There's Jim Mason, Steve Irving, and John Pappas. The respondent is the city of DeKalb. City of DeKalb is, has to make a decision what they're going to do with this property. I'm going to go right to the facts. I'm not going to talk about how I've been here for 54 years. Some people may know that, may not. But here I go. Go right to the John Pappas idea. He wants to pay $600,000 to the city. He's going to have $150,000 probably to tear down the building. That's what it'll cost to demolish the building. The cost of Pappas's project then to the city on TIF is $750,000. Mr. Pappas and his family want to change the density zoning to 32 units per acre on this project. To my knowledge, the city of DeKalb has never had 32 units per acre except for university property or something of that nature. This 32 units an acre would be 78 units on 2.5 acres, which would bring anywhere from 250 to 400 people to the site on any given day, on babies, family members, and what have you. The one thing that all petitioners are asking for is to freeze their taxes for 20 years. Why is that so important? This is the most important thing that could actually, actually happen here tonight, even if I don't prevail. No developer can build single-family houses in, excuse me, apartments, not houses, apartments, in DeKalb because the cost of the taxes are twice what it is in the rest of the United States. I'm advertising in the valley, come out to DeKalb because our prices are so depressed because people aren't here. But one reason we have a problem here is because some develop, some property owners are selling their apartments to pay the taxes on the buildings they have. Example. If you build a $2 million apartment house, and then after the taxes pump up for two or three or four years, your place will be worth maybe 1.1 million. Net operating income is what we live on. So all three petitioners today are asking to freeze the taxes at basically six, six or seven months, weeks rent. In other words, there's 52 weeks in a year. And when I came here 50 years ago, the taxes were six and a half weeks rent. Now, it's, some people are playing 22 weeks. That's why they have to sell their buildings to pay the taxes. Now, the school board 12 years ago was $56 million for District 428. Today, it's over 100 million. So you can see what I'm talking about. All right, so that's really important. Let's see, that's number one. Where's number two? Okay, so we talked about the taxes, 31 units an acre. Okay. When I came here, it was 23 units an acre. Then it went to 18 units an acre, and then it went to 12 units an acre. And Mike Verbic told me on the phone one day, it's 12 units an acre. Since we don't need more single-family or, or one bedroom. Since we don't need more single-family or, or, uh, one bedroom apartments or studios, these'll be studios at six hundred square feet for Mr. Pappas. We really don't need seventy-eight, six hundred square foot efficiencies on the main entrance to the town, in my opinion. Okay. Northern Illinois is out of the high-rise business. Northern Illinois, nineteen, let's see, two thousand and twenty, October two thousand and twenty, I stood and broadcast on Inconvenient Truth Radio Show, that if Northern Illinois would, with parent permission, a three-point-five or better, let students live off campus with a three-point-five or better, in other words, a R.A. student, they turned me down. I said, this is what you have to do, and guess what happened? Now, you don't have to live in a dorm, and it's one person to a room. So Northern is realizing that the high-rises aren't the way to go, or the density is not the way to go. So, then I take a look at, why are we building more efficiencies downtown when we have so many efficiencies that are unrented in the west side of town? I'm moving on. Number three. I'm not gonna go over my time. Mr. Irving, one of my favorite people in this town. Mr. Irving now wants to build twenty units per acre, uh, twenty units on two-point-five acres. Mr. Irving wants to pay nine thousand dollars for the building. That's understandable. I originally offered one dollar, because I was told they were gonna tear it down. I talked to the city manager, now I've agreed, now I'm changing my offer to six hundred thousand. I'm offering six hundred thousand to the city for the building. Mr. Irving is, wants to pay nine thousand for the building, and he wants one-point-six million TIF to buy down the construction cost. I heard that he, it costs two-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand a unit for each of these houses that he wants to build, and by the way, they're really nice. Steve's cost would be two dol, two, two, uh, two-hundred-and-four dollars a square foot. Or, his cost, once he buys the one-point-six down, the cost would be one-hundred-and-sixty-seven thousand a unit. So if it costs two-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand for Mr. Irving to build this, and he gets one-point-six, that means the cost to him would be, his construction cost will probably be around a hundred and twenty-five dollars a square foot, like mine. Steve is a good businessman, and so is John. These are, these, the, I'm in the Shark Tank right now. Not up to their speed, but I do break things down, insofar as, I will be building twelve-hundred-and-fifty square-foot townhouses with six-hundred-and-twenty square-foot garages so people can store stuff. They will be only for families, not for students. My cost on that project will be one-point-six million. I will pay that. So I'm willing to give you four hundred thousand dollars in cash out of my proceeds. I'm willing to maintain the building and lease it for corporate, Mason Corporate Suites to people all over the United States. I am advertising in six markets as of tonight, all over Illinois, for, Northern Illinois is open for business, and Mason Properties is the place to be, and when I get that building, I will shoot the building and advertise it all over Illinois. If I don't get it rented in two years, I'll tear it down and put eleven more townhouses on the west side of the street, and eleven more townhouses on the east side, at my expense. So what I'm offering to the table here is twenty-two units of the finest construction you can see in my, on my assets, and I want to save the city for the people of DeKalb. So I would plead with the citizens of DeKalb to get behind me to save this place. I'm asking for six hundred and thirty-five thousand in TIF money, of which, four hundred thousand for the purchase of the building, two hundred thousand in the TIF money will go for the purchase of the building, and I will maintain this thing and rent it like I rent everything else. In closing, um, I have one, our page is pretty good here, too. Okay, my, again, mine will be twelve-hundred-and-fifty square feet, garages will be twenty-five by thirty-two, on the outsides of the buildings where the neighbors are on the east, and the street isn't, there'll be a twenty-five-foot patio with a gate so you could get to the street. We will park four cars, two cars inside and two cars outside, on my, kinda like what Steve's doing. And that'll be twenty-five. Now, I just thought of this today. Also, when I die, I will bequeath this building back to the city of DeKalb.
Thank you, Jim. Our final presentation before council has a chance to ask a few questions or make a few comments, is from Pappas Development, and Foti Pappas will represent the Pappas Development Firm. Foti?
Good evening, Mayor Smith, city manager Bill Nicholas, and council. My name is Foti Pappas, Vice President of Pappas Development. I'd like to start off by first thanking Jim Mason and my buddy Steve Irving on their proposals. I think it's important that other local developers in the area have stepped up with their vision on moving DeKalb forward. However, I'm here today to talk about what I believe is best suited for the old city municipality building. What Pappas Development is proposing is seventy-eight luxury units to be put on the site. That will be broken out into four separate buildings. This development will be called the Jonin Executive Suites, after the great general Jonin DeKalb. Think it's great to pay a little homage to our history here. Now, these executive suites would have, would be fully furnished, very similar to the cornerstone. They would have all utilities included, as well as Wi-Fi, high-speed internet. We're gonna have a gym in each building, a yoga studio, bike storage, as that's a big demand these days, a hospitality room, and outdoor covered picnic areas for residents to meet, have barbecues, and have a good time. Now, with Cornerstone, we kinda jumped into, we, we always knew this market was here in DeKalb, a, a luxury market that just was not met. To the, the, to the presenters prior, to their, to their credit, there is a lot of multifamily in town, but it's not luxury multifamily. It is falling apart, and unfortunately, there are a lot of landlords out there that have been doing a lot of repairs with duct tape and gum, and the new high-end Facebook employees, Candy Factory employees, a lot more industry here than we sometimes give ourselves credit for, are simply not gonna live in these areas. So we're losing them to Geneva, we're losing to Naperville, we're losing them to surrounding areas. They're not staying in DeKalb because we just didn't have this product. So with Cornerstone, that really got the ball moving on meeting a lot of these people. So that pushed us into the Plaza, Plaza with, we, we received certificate of occupancy three days before COVID-19 pandemic hit. That building was still leased up within forty-five days at its per form of pricing. That just goes to show you the demand for these luxury apartments in DeKalb. And these apartments were not rented by, you know, somebody that's shifting from, from another property across town into our building. These were net new renters in town. These were renters that simply were not getting their needs met. We're not relying on the university. I would say on a, on a good day, we're twenty-two percent at these buildings with university, and that happens to be a, anywhere from a visiting professor from another country, or a graduate student that's done with fifteen roommates, and they just wanna get serious with their studies. The rest of it really is just professionals. They don't bring three cars with, they don't bring their families with, they just wanna unpack their suitcase, they want a clean-cut environment, they don't wanna deal with furniture shopping, they don't wanna deal with calling comment, they don't wanna deal with calling nightcore, they just want a turnkey, almost hotel-style amenity. Now, with the Jonin buildings here, we're gonna set, I'm not sure which, if, if you can kick through some of the slides here. So this is an exterior rendering, and then if we could move one more slide, and I think it's, it's, it should be the following. Uh, there, there should be one with the interior of the building here. You don't have that up? Okay. Not, not a problem, we'll adjust. So, so each one of these will be built like four mansions, that's kind of our, our vision here. And, and what do you mean by mansion? When you walk into this building, you're gonna be walking into a twenty-foot foyer. We're gonna have a beautiful custom-made wood-grain staircase all the way up to two stories, to feel like you're walking into, to an old, an old mansion, really. And the suites will be like the individual rooms within this mansion. So something new, we're getting better with every project. So, so this is actually something that should be pretty neat for the residents. Now, really back to the thought of having too many luxury units. It's, it's Cornerstone downtown DeKalb, it's the Plaza, so we have about seventy-five units there. We're at a hundred percent, sometimes a hundred and ten percent occupancy. With the new Facebook announcement, I'm having to turn away three to four people a day, and again, I'm not losing them to somebody across town. I'm losing them to Geneva, I'm losing them to Naperville. So DeKalb really needs, if, if, with the great work of the city management, administration, and council, we're now pulling in this business. Well, we have to sustain and keep this business here. They do not wanna purchase a home for the next six years, they're just not gonna do that. And if somebody wants to purchase a home in town, there's plenty of inventory, let's be honest, and we have lots for days. There's an unlimited amount of single-family homes here, whether you want it to be affordable or super-expensive. What we do lack, though, is when the executive of, of the structural engineering, happens to be someone living in my building for Facebook, shows up to town, he wants to be in a building like the Plaza, he wants to be in a building like Jonin Executive Suites. So this is something I believe the town and the city needs to fill. Let's build on the momentum we have going downtown, let's get the density downtown, wh, which in turn will get the businesses thriving. Everybody already here sees it. Look at the traction we've had at the Cornerstone. Unfortunately, this year got a little goofy for us, but you have the Tavern on, on Lincoln bringing in local people, it's not college students, it's local folks hanging out. Built on top of Luna, you have Eduardo's, who's gonna be expanding, you have the New Mexican Restaurant down the street going up, you have Jamra across the street, I just finished another five individual suites there, we have another four independently-owned women businesses moving downtown. They're moving from Cortland, they're moving from Sycamore, or they're just moving out of their basements onto the main road. And again, we just wanna continue to build on this new world. This world of small, tiny, you know, single-family homes is, it's just not there. It, it's not there with the vision downtown DeKalb really is building on. So with that, kinda wraps up my presentation here. If there's any additional questions or somebody wants to ask, feel free to do so. If not, I thank you for your consideration. I thank everybody in this room for listening, and look forward to moving forward with this. Thanks.
Thank you, Foti. Before I turn it over to council for any questions or comments, our purpose tonight is to ask a few questions and then be in a position to provide Mr. Nicholas some time between now and, and perhaps whenever, because we wanna make a decision going forward on this, the, the feeling of the council. We've not had an opportunity to discuss this, we have taken a look at a lot of the background information. Before I turn it over, I just wanna say, Steve, Jim, Foti, thank you. Thank you for stepping up and, and, and helping us take a look at a piece of property, a block, that made sense for fifty years. The municipal building was built in nineteen sixty-eight, so as it stands, it's fifty-two years old. Where we are now is working out in classic character, it really is. So what we need to do is find something that does make sense for the citizens of the city of DeKalb. And all three of these proposals, in many ways remarkably different, and we've gotta make a decision to give Mr. Nicholas some, some direction. Mr. Nicholas has made a public recommendation that the Pappas proposal be recommended by staff, but what Bill recommends and what this council chooses to do is not necessarily in line each and every time we have a discussion, believe me. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to council for any comments or questions. If you have a specific question to Jim, or to Foti, or to Steve, please indicate, and we'll give you guys a chance to get that back up at the podium. Don't all raise your hand at once. Okay. Alderman Verbic.
Questions for each. First, Mr. Irving, the homes, do you have a vision that they would be differentiated like Lucerne Lane, for example? And would people have the ability to customize it to their desires? In other words, a basement, finished basement, maybe some, some custom-type features that, that may or may not be included, or at least have those people have that option with you?
All houses at, at DeKalb, at Lucerne, the whole, you look at them, there's, they're all different colors, some people, some trellis up, a different type of, some are fenced in the backyard, there's a lot of individuality there, and the basic structure would be not really changeable, but the, the decor, very much so.
Great. And then, Mr. Mason, with your executive suites idea, then would you entertain those that would wanna do a build-out, or, you know, some type of a, again, custom renovation of that space? What, what's your vision for what you see, how you see that space developing?
There's two, there's two concepts here. One is the building, say, hall, basically stays exactly the same on the outside, and I would lease it to people based on their prerequisites. Once they come to me, they need this, they need that computer, they need flyby, they need something in the hallway, but that building basically will stay the way it is until, as far as my townhouses, they would all be the same on the street that's to the east. And then the southwest side of the lot would stay parking lot. So, the would, the only upgrades would be for the Mason Suites, for the corporate customers, doctors, lawyers, et cetera. I would make those replacements.
Great, thanks. And then Foti, with regard to your, just your thoughts about how you put this together, was there any consideration for commercial space? Any notion to try to attract, you know, some type of a business in, into that area? Or do you see, well, that the commercial spaces are close enough, so, for example, hopefully the annex across the street, that'd be wonderful if that redeveloped someday, but you just feel that there's enough, close enough, to not offer it there, then?
There is. When you, when you start to get too far off the ocean, let's call it an hour, the ocean right, or any, any good retail space, that's, it'd be a highly visible area. Second, you start getting too far away from that, the numbers just don't work. I mean, you could propose it, you could, you could put it in there, but I think you'd be fooling yourself to, to think that, you know, you're gonna have people waiting in line to rent that, that commercial space. And really with the feel of this, the way we're setting up each one of these buildings almost feel like it's all mansion, and the outdoor living space to be like a, a little community, how we have this opportunity of four buildings to do this. We wanna keep it residential. It, it's gonna help with, with the security, with the feel, with everything. And, and then, you know, how you're starting to move closer to Long Island Highway, the annex, or have you, well, those are good opportunities for that commercial space. We just feel with our vision there, we're better off keeping it purely residential.
Great, thanks. And our, our challenge is really, it's comprehensive planning on the fly. We, again, we, we've not had that with ourselves, with other governing bodies. We, we all have an opinion of what do we need in DeKalb? You know, do we need luxury apartments? Do we need single-family homes? What is that? And, you know, that's, again, hopefully something we can get at here soon with regard to the entire city. What, what is that need? And have a better understanding of, of what people expect. Thank you.
Any other aldermen would like to, like to make a comment? You know, what I, what I, I would, before some- You know, what I, what I, I would, before someone perhaps, uh, chimes in here, I think it's very important, regardless of which company, Irving, Mason, Pappas, it's very important that when this is approved and you have the get-go, it's so important that you talk with the neighborhood. I know when the Isaac Suites out on Sycamore Road was built, I think one of the things that, John, I know you did recently, was to talk to the neighbors. And the neighbors had a tremendous buy-in. So regardless of what we do, although I think in the Irving proposal, um, the, the character of those single-family units tend to more or less, uh, blend in more with what's happening on Fifth Street or Fourth Street or Prospect and down the street. But I think it's very, very important, so I would hope that whoever, uh, gets the nod from this city council, uh, works with the neighbors, uh, and obviously, I'm sure there will be some public hearings and zoning, et cetera, where they'll have an opportunity to, uh, to chat with you, but it's very important to me. Alderman Morris.
First, I just wanna thank you all for coming forward with three absolutely different, really exciting options for us to, to consider. I do have to say that I see the numbers adding up in, uh, this one project much more so than the others. Pappas' plan stopped working. I, I see the numbers adding up there differently. If you look at the overall redevelopment proposals here, you know, we are given three really different, exciting options. I do wanna ask, you know, what does our long-term plan say? Just like, you know, Alderman Verbic was getting at, what is our overall overview for the area? But regardless of what our overall plan suggests and says, um, you know, the numbers here are really promising. And we have seen that higher-end market opening up, and we have seen that that's definitely an attractive market. You know, when you look at the purchase price, the TIF amount, the value upon build-out, the EAV upon build-out, it's really a no, I apologize, but it's, it's a no-brainer. This is the wisest investment choice that we could make with the tax dollars that we are, um, entrusted with managing. So it seems pretty straightforward as far as the best choice for an investment. And I absolutely hear where Mr. Irving is coming from considering, um, considering, well, do we want single-family homes? You know, are we really looking for, what kind of community are we trying to build? And what sort of demographic are we looking for? And who are we as DeKalb? And how do we wanna be? So I can definitely see where he's going with that. And so that's really attractive, too, to have single-family homes, but there are quite a number of lots in the community. Of course, like he was saying, the smaller the lot gets, the more affordable it becomes for, uh, for a family. So that's, that's a really solid point as well. And I love Jim Mason's idea of, you know, rebuilding City Hall and trying to work with what we've got, trying to be as efficient as possible with what's already there. So these are three really great plans, but it does seem like the best investment is clear. And I do think that working on, you know, I'm looking at the number of units here a lot. We've got seventy-eight units total in the Pappas Plan, um, eighteen units to twenty-one units in the Irving Plan, and, um, Jim Mason's Plan, uh, you wanna remind me?
Eleven units on the east side, tear down the building at twenty.
Okay. So eleven to twenty-two units. And so, you know, I understand, so over in, in my ward, in the first ward, we do not want to increase, um, population density. That's one of the things that we, we know from the AGN revitalization plan, we don't wanna increase population density over there because we're at max capacity. I don't think it's quite the same on this side of town, I think we're in a different situation. And especially when we get to talking about, um, you know, high-end luxury apartments, we're talking about a whole different demographic that we're aiming at. And we're talking about, um, bringing seventy-eight, you know, and, and Jim Mason did the numbers for us, two-hundred-and-fifty to four-hundred people on, you know, two acres of land. That's a lot more people trafficking downtown who want to walk, who want to bicycle, who want to have those close-access things that they're actually going to be using. So it feels like, actually, that influx of high-end luxury apartments gives us an increased number of people to do the foot traffic that we want, to create the foot traffic that we really want to sustain downtown, and the people with the money who can afford to go out for every meal. So, that's it.
Thank you, Carolyn. Alderman McAdams.
I wanna echo the same things that, uh, the other aldermen have said, thanking the developers for bringing forth three very interesting and different proposals. There's something to like about each of the three proposals. Mr. Irving's, uh, single-family home idea is a fantastic idea for that neighborhood. And I was curi-, I do have a couple of questions. My question for you was, where did you come up with the nine-thousand-dollar number for the, uh, the purchase?
Well, I would say contrary to what I heard one of the other guys say, it's called tearing down City Hall. I did.
Oh, thank you.
Quite a bit of, uh, investigation on tearing down City Hall, and it isn't quite as simple as, uh, I think Jim was the one that alluded to a hundred thousand dollars. I got a quote just on the asbestos removal, and this was not including, we were unable to get into all the rooms there. And, and the quote was between fifty and seventy-five thousand dollars just to remove the damn asbestos. That has to be done according to EPA to get a permit for a demo, first. The water in the sewer are substandard. I've met with the sanitary district three times, the sanitary sewer is clay tile and it's in the middle of the alley. The water, I've met with, uh, Brian Favor at the water department a couple times, the water is substandard. It's a four-inch line on the other side of Fourth Street, and it's a four-inch line on Fifth Street. There's a myriad of other, uh, factors that enter into the demolition of the building. The alley has to get tore out to get to the sanitary. The question whether you have to bore the road to tie into the water main, it could be very expensive. So how did I get to the cost of, uh, the offer for the property? I figured a complete demolition and improvement of the utilities of over a million dollars.
That's, that's good. Uh, my, uh, question for Mr. Mason was, uh, you mentioned that there'd be corporate interest, uh, interested in coming over, doctors and lawyers. Have you heard from any potential renters in that market? Are, where, where does that, how does that market look, um, from a developer's standpoint?
Jeff Keiger called. Can you hear me?
Jeff Keiger called me, and he congratulated me for the concept because it'll be full,
I, I think I could fill it, fill it right away. Substantial pack, taxes will be, uh, paid on that building if it's filled out. Have I talked to anybody? No. But I've been in this business for forty, fifty years, and, uh, I know there's a market. I will be advertising, the big thing you get out of me is I'm gonna advertise both for my own businesses and, and for this property. We will shoot this thing and send it all over the state of Illinois, and you'll get more business out of this than you could imagine. So, um, do I have anybody tonight? No. But I know the building is in such good shape, if you leave it alone, once you disturb it, you've got a problem, as Steve said. So, don't have anybody today, but I'm not worried about it, and I'd like to keep the block base, basically the way it is. He's right about Orangeburg, Steve is, the sewers are not the best, uh, but they'll be taken care of. As far as my townhouse concept, it's basically the same thing that I'm gonna be doing over in Sycamore. I had a fire over there. I have changed it, it's a little better, it's a lot more parking, uh, but I'll have twenty-two townhouses versus seventy-eight, six-hundred-square-foot rooms. I don't know how luxury that is, my bedroom is bigger than that. So I don't know why that's a six, uh, uh, that quality. Do not have anybody today, but I'll get them for you.
Okay.
Thank you.
And then the, the toughest question I have is for the Pappas, uh, top project. It was brought to my attention that the assessment, um, on the properties that you have had TIF money on have not quite measured up to what the proposals and what the projections were initially. Will there be a, a buyback clause in, if the proposals aren't, uh, the proposal as set, if the assessments don't meet the same numbers? Is that part of the arrangement? Is that something you're agreeable to?
Now, as far as the proposal, which one specifically did not meet up to its?
Uh, they were saying Cornerstone was supposed to be six-and-a-half million, and it's only at four-hundred million. Is that correct or incorrect?
So I just got done writing a, a check for, uh, ninety-four thousand dollars in property tax there. That's the first installment, I'm getting ready to write the second one. On a three-million-dollar investment, a cash-on-cash return for the taxpayer, I think that's pretty significant. And that's just the Cornerstone. And this doesn't bring in the sales tax from the tavern, or from the nail salon, or from Barb City Bagel. So I'd argue, that's a pretty darn good investment for the people. And then they improve. When you get to the Plaza, there was a smaller TIF request, when you get to Agora, and, and now with, with, uh, the Joinin Executive Suites, the return on investment for the taxpayer, like us or not, at the end of the day, an investment's an investment. You don't have to love the stocks you own, but when they give you a cash-on-cash return of, of eight percent, they even some change guaranteed for life, I'd take that any day.
Thank you.
We have taken the full hour, uh, and we can go beyond this. Tony, I know you wanted to say something, we'll try to wrap the, well, yeah, we'll try to wrap this up as quickly as we can, but, uh, what I see council wanting to do is to discuss this further, uh, so Alderman Favor.
I'll try and be brief, then, 'cause I know, uh, second word, Alderman wants to speak as well. So I'll just ask the city manager, comment was made that we were gonna freeze taxes. I did not understand that to be the case, and all the proposals except for the second proposal is that we're not, the, the statement is property tax allowing zero percent increase for twenty years is, we're not tying the property tax, just.
No, that, that was just a proposal.
That's just a proposal for numbers.
No, I, I don't see how the council could afford to do that or any other taxing money.
What I would love to see, and, like, what everybody else said, thank you. You know, it's great to see local developers coming and bidding on the project, uh, or proposing. Obviously, what would be the very best for DeKalb is, is to provide value for the current residents that live in the neighborhood, obviously to provide value for the, um, taxpayers of DeKalb. So one of my, I guess my questions, I'll direct it, uh, at Pappas Development Group. I'm not, this is a perfect time to say this because you haven't invested any money in, in really any plans, you haven't gone before the Planning and Zoning Commission, you haven't been approved to build your project. I don't like the facade. I think we could do something a little bit better in terms of that facade that works its way into becoming part of the neighborhood. I don't know if that's, uh, like row houses like they have in Chicago, but some other type of facade that fits the neighborhood or kind of pulls between the downtown and the residential area in DeKalb, there's some transition other than, it, it's fairly stark. So that's my one comment. I, I actually, uh, Mr. Irving, I, I love your project. I, I was around when the Pond neighborhood was revitalized, and, uh, that was a great project. I, I really like the project that you're presenting as well. Mr. Mason, I'm just concerned there's not enough residential or, uh, commercial, I think there's a lot of commercial rental space on the market today, a lot of office space that sits empty today. So I'm concerned with the proposal that would keep the, uh, current City Hall. Plus, the, the reason we wanted to move out of City Hall is so much money in the boiler system, the asbestos and all that, so, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Fanouken.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, again, I wanna thank, uh, John, Fody, Jim, Wheezy, you too, I know you're a part of this. Doc, I assume you're a silent partner somewhere along the line, and Steve, thank you all for putting these things together. You know, the, the, um, end result in terms of dollars to the city was not a factor in this. I really would prefer to see, uh, single-family owner-occupied homes. But I know that's something that we're gonna have to continue to discuss on what we truly see for, for that area. Again, I'm, I'm really happy with what I'm seeing, I, I don't wanna throw any of them under the bus right away, I mean, I think there's value in all three of them. And I think, though, that we do, as a council, need to take care of the financial consideration for the taxpayers, for the rest of the city. And I think that's some things that we do need, as the mayor just stated, some more discussion on. So that's my comments for this point.
Thank you. Uh, Alderman Perkins, and then Alderman Smith, and then Alderman Morris. Alderman Perkins.
I'll re-echo the same thoughts. Great to see three, um, three options that are all viable, interesting. My question is really more for Bill and city staff. So, Bill, why did you recommend the, the Pappas proposal? And what's a city, and what's a city staff perspective on it? Because it's, it's a great opportunity to kind of reshape the downtown area. There, there's a lot to unpack there.
Yeah. Yeah. And, and probably we don't have time to do this tonight because we've got a regular meeting scheduled for six o'clock, but, um, I'll, I'll just offer a couple things for you to consider, and when we bring this back, probably at, at the next regular meeting, we'll have an opportunity to pursue this some more. A couple of things, we were definitely looking for the return on investment, and, and, uh, council member Morris is, is right on target with that. It's, it's not something that we can take lightly, particularly in the, in the current circumstances, but as we have a longer view, it's very important. It, it, it's incumbent upon us to see the importance of leveraging redevelopment with TIF in a responsible fashion. And the way you do that is you see how, over time, you're gonna create incremental value, whatever the life of that project is. So that's one thing. For another thing, it's a transitional area, it's, it's zoned central business district. If it's going to go toward, uh, housing and all, and all three have a housing component, uh, some stronger than others, uh, then typically the transition is multifamily between the central business district and/or, or a, a higher, uh, density commercial district, and the single-family as you go further south and also to the east. So, uh, you've got commercial on the west side, commercial on the north side, and you've got, uh, vehicle repair shops to the north side, you've got a general contractor to the north side. So, uh, you have to, if you're taking planning considerations to heart, then you have to look at something that's gonna transition. And, uh, and finally, uh, uh, the Pappas family's been, uh, able to prove in the last couple of years what no one thought was provable. They've been able to prove that there is this market, and council member, uh, Morris pointed that out earlier. Uh, the, the proof is in what, what they have generated, uh, at, at Cornerstone and Plaza, and I, I assume is gonna continue both up, uh, on Sycamore Road and also in the, the old Mooney property. So, uh, I, I didn't see it two, three years ago, it's palpable, it's, it's very clear. And, um, as you know, I work evenings and weekends, I'm downtown now. There is no, uh, more inobtrusive populace than what is living in Cornerstone and Plaza. But you see their cars there, they're there, they're in the shops, they're in the stores, they're eating downtown, but, uh, it's a, it's a, it's a great fit.
Is, is there concern on the, the collective concentration of the combination of Cornerstone, the Mooney Place, this, and the Adewun Downtown? If we were to crank the clock back five years ago, you know, we're talking significant numbers. What's the incremental number of units with all of those? Is it four-hundred-ish?
Well, first of all, so, uh, Mr. Pappas had proposed seventy-eight units, um, and, and that's what's before you tonight. There's not two-hundred, three-hundred, four-hundred people gonna be in these units, there's mostly one, maybe two.
But I'm just talking about collectively, collectively, when you add them all up.
Well, I have these gentlemen here, off the top of your head, Fody, how many in Cornerstone?
Fifty-one, twenty-two, ninety-four, seven, eight.
So what's that, what's that math?
Two-fifty.
Two-fifty?
Yeah. Yeah. So what do, who are we competing with? Geneva-St. Charles, we said earlier, absolutely. Do you see what's happening on South Third Street and South Seventh Street and so forth? Look at the population, look at the density. You need foot traffic or you're not gonna get the commercial, it's just that fundamental. Right now, developers are basically giving away their, their commercial space, rent-wise, in order to, uh, attract commercial, uh, tenants. And they're making up for it because they're not in the business as a charity, they're making up for it with the rents above. That's the formula, it's working. So we have an opportunity here to go with what works or what... So we have an opportunity here to go with what works, or what is just some idealized assumption that hasn't been proven. That's why I felt so strongly, and said that, and believe me, I lived with this for a week, sifting and sorting and trying to be fair through all three, and every one of them has merit. But we're after, right now, when you see next week where we stand financially, you'll see why I was, I found it very appealing, what the return on investment is.
Alderman Smith.
I'll be brief. Gentlemen, I know of all three of you, four of you, Foti, thank you very much. I mean, I've heard nothing but positive with the community, that we had more than one person come forward. So I think that's a big plus for the city of DeKalb. You know, more people are coming forward saying, hey, you know, let's have some variety, let's have some competition, if you want to call it that. So that's good for us. One thing I'm concerned about is that building. I worked in that building for way longer than I care to mention anybody, and I agree with Steve. He was involved in the new police department, he knows what goes on in that building. Couple of things I'm concerned about, if reuse of that building, John, you can pipe in, please. What about the lead in the range? That's a huge hazardous material removal. I don't think we've, anybody here's really thought about an upper reuse of the building. I take a we-can't-transfer title without removing lead. Would that be correct? In the range that's downstairs, am I speaking out of place, or? Bill, Jim, either one of you?
I would have to look at that. Quite frankly, I don't have the answer off the top of my head. Certainly, we could always transfer it as-is, and it's up to the subsequent reuser to deal with whatever environmental issues are there.
Okay, thank you.
Sir, Tracy? I'll take it from here, because we have lead there, and shoot, it's all the house.
I don't think the neighbors would appreciate it.
Can I hear it outside?
Yeah. My office was above it for years, yes.
No, can I hear it outside?
Yes, you can.
Over to the ownership and actor here.
You can hear it outside the walls, yeah. It's not, it was never designed for what's down there. So Bob's chief's here, he would probably agree with me 100%. It'll wake you up, if you're taking a nap in your office. I'll let you. Yeah. Trying to lighten up this conversation here. But anyway, gentlemen, thank you all. I've heard nothing but positive. Another thing I want to mention is, I think with Council, we're earmarking funds for the Body Cam program. Am I correct? Did we talk about that? Did I, am I leading this town the wrong path?
No, that was the same answer, proposals, one way to afford what we had proposed here a couple of weeks ago at an earlier meeting, and the Council seemed to be in favor of that, and we haven't voted on the budget yet.
What I hear here is that we have a console that is truly appreciative of all three proposals, and unless somebody comes up here and starts strangling me, I'm gonna try to cut this off. The woman gets the last word over here. Carolyn, did you want to make one final comment, and then we'll wrap it up? Thank you.
I was just gonna mention about the environmental remediation in the basement, too. I was concerned about that, because I want to make sure that whoever does purchase the property does, makes a responsible choice with that.
Okay. Alderman Verbic, real quickly.
And the competition is there. I took a drive over to Oswego this weekend, 144 luxury apartments being constructed by Shodin. So you've made great points about where we need to position ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you, Pappas, Irving, and Mason, the developers, we really appreciate it. I would now entertain a motion to adjourn this committee of the whole. Some moved?
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Favor, seconded by Alderman Perkins. Any discussion? Roll call. City Clerk, please.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdam.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
ADI.
This meeting of the committee of the whole is adjourned. City Council, our regular City Council meeting will convene properly at 6:25, 6:25. Thank you.
Pete, do it, Carolyn. You and I take a like on that, so.
I know, I was like, I've been worried about that 11 basis.
Seems to be early.
Stay warm.